Start yelling at you, they have to pay the security.
That's really cool.
I had no idea.
They even know.
Oh, God. It could have been. Daniel gets kidney stones.
But I hadn't met the person.
I'm sorry for it. I'm sorry for you.
A toe? Oh, yeah. I'm guessing.
I'll call you, yeah. I'll take notes for you.
I didn't want the bank either.
Bill, are you guys ready to get going?
Ready.
Okay, all right. We'll go ahead and kickstart the budget workshop. Mr. Manager, I guess I'll pass it over to you since you've got the spreadsheet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is on, great. So, Counselor Vale asked that we bring back just a equalized value of mill rates because, as he described and as is correct, a mill rate doesn't mean much unless you know if it's an equalized mill rate. And an equalized mill rate is done each year by the state because they basically bring us all to what they perceive as 100%. Most of you know, and I think a large amount of the public knows well, that our town's valuation, what the assessor is valuing all properties currently at, is about $1.5 billion. When you look at this line right here, on the orange line here, you'll see we're just under $2.4 billion. That's where the state has us equalized. Last year, the town grew in value by $200 million. Now, it doesn't mean we had $200 million in growth, we probably had closer to 25 or 30 million. But the appreciation on the property in this community, based on the sales value of the last couple of years, pushed that number to over, almost 2.4 billion in state value. Now, that's not just Cumberland, that's every town across the state. So, each year, to give out revenue sharing, as well as aid to education, the state basically equalizes each town's values. When you do that, that's when you can accurately put together a mill rate. Because they also look what our tax assessment was, they look at everybody's tax assessment. And this is back, this is not last year, but the year before, they're always lagging a year behind us. So, back in 2022, our tax assessment was just under $29 million. And based on the state valuation, they have us at 1217. So, I believe when we are, when the re-vows come through, the new value on the mill rate will probably be closer to 13 or 14, but John will have a little bit better handle on that, probably by January or so. So, Bob, to your, to answer to your question, this basically puts Cumberland's mill rate, or you can equivocate that to tax rate, because these are all equalized values, meaning they're all at 100% of their state value, and they're showing, represent the assessment all in the same year. Brunswick was the highest, then Yarmouth, Fry Island, I think you could push aside, perhaps, and then Cumberland followed, with Portland and Gorham following directly after us. When you did that same calculation across the entire state, if I kind of unhide all these, if I can do that. When you do that to all the towns in the state, you'll see that we end up, let's see if I can do that, oh, I'm at the top, that's why. We come down to, I think, like 160th.
Yeah, that's what you've got written up there.
Yeah, okay, so I won't keep looking for it. But that's where we're at, and that's a quick overview of mill rate. So, when you see a mill rate, if you don't know that it's an equalized mill rate, it really is meaningless, it really is. So, that was a good point, Bob, appreciate the exercise, and very, very easy to do. So, now we'll, now we'll jump over to TIFs, kind of the focus of our meeting tonight. And we have eight TIF districts in our town. I'm going to come back up to our projections chart. These are the eight districts at the top of your page in blue. Their expiration dates are shown in the next column over, they go all the way out to 2048. We will have a couple of properties that expire in 2026 with their credit enhancement agreements, but the first district's going to expire in 2028. And what I say, what I mean by expire is that in 2028, the 30 years that we had on the original TIF District 1, which is the northern part of Route 1, will no longer be in a tax increment financing district. Its life will have ended on typically March 30th. They do it on the assessing year, and the assessing year begins on April 1st. So, this district, however, is something that we have talked with the Finance Committee on a couple of occasions now, that if you had a desire to look at expansion of transit or expansion of affordable housing, this district could be extended for 20 years, and it says right there in your column, could be extended for 20 years, if 75% of that money is used for transit and/or affordable housing. The other 25 is eligible for whatever you want, it's deemed TIF-worthy, I will just qualify that.
Bill had a question, do we know?
That's an and/or.
Yes.
What was her question?
An and/or, that is an and/or, you can use it for both, or one or the other.
Do we know whether it's, when it says 75% needs to be used for affordable housing, do we know whether that means 75% of the new revenue generated as of its new life, or is it past as well? Do we know?
Well, you have to, you would have to do this no later than FY '27, and you're going into FY '25 now, so you have two years to take advantage of this opportunity. If you allow it to go to FY '28, you don't get the 20-year bonus.
No, I guess my question is, is, you know, right now, it's got a, it's got a, does it roll, does the current value?
The current value will freeze, and whatever your, all these values that you're seeing here in the FY '25 column, the FY '26 column will be, you know, 1.2 to 1.6 higher. Because the revaluation will reset the clock on all these as well. So, there will be a new set of values for your TIF districts with FY '26.
That's, that's why, there will be a new set of values.
There will be a new set of values.
And that's what it would, would, so like, let's say that value is today 19 million, right? I'm just making up a number. But in 2027, when we create, if we created this new extension for 20 years, the value would be locked in that day at 20 million, or whatever.
Whatever the new, yes, whatever the assessor.
And then, so if it grew to 21 million, then we'd have 1 million in additional
Revenues.
Revenue, from that texture, okay.
Right. So, it is important that the council does act on that going forward. What I will share with you is that it's, it is a significant portion of money that goes into these TIF districts, and I think you should be ready to act on that, hopefully sooner rather than later. It's, there's no urgency right now to do it, but one of the things that your Housing Task Force has asked for is a Housing Director. Those funds would be, could be used for the Housing Director's salary and benefits and all of that, because that's part of affordable housing. It also could be used if the council decided at some time in the future to expand the metro into town, it could be used to pay for that. If we were successful, and the Amtrak stopped here in Cumberland, it could pay for a parking facility, a train platform, all of the above. Now, all of these are expensive endeavors, and they would, would come from these revenues, but they would be there for a very long time, and that, and that TIF district would be another 20 years, as you worked into it.
Knowing that we're going into the comprehensive plan.
Tig, Mike.
Oh, sorry.
Knowing that we're going into the comprehensive plan, which will take presumably more than a year, right? If I were, if I were on that committee, I would think that I would want to know if that was a tool available to us, so would it make sense for us to kind of think about that, so that it's in tandem with their planning, so they know kind of all the tools that they have in their tool belt versus like, an afterthought?
Absolutely. It's the right way to go, really is. And I think that, I think that direction should come from the council as well, is that here are some priorities that have some time sensitivity toward them.
I think, I think you, I think you answered my question, and I think Mike answered too. If we allow the timing to lapse, i.e. '27, and we don't pick it up until '29, it's a lost deal, correct?
It's a done deal, yeah.
So, there's an impetus not to let it lapse.
Right, but you have two, two, three years technically before you get there, so just get it done before April 1st of '27.
Or before we start the comp plan. Or before we also start the comp plan, so the people that are doing the comp plan can also take that into account when they're building out there, holding that out, right?
So, each, each one of the districts obviously has value to it, each one of the districts is basically totals 100 and nearly $145 million of value in totality. The largest district you have today is TIF District 1. TIF District 2 and 3, I've always considered as one district, it's the southern district. District 2 is the smaller of the two, which includes CFAX, I'm trying to think of the new name for Pack Edge, but I'm always going to refer to it as Pack Edge, so that building that the gentleman that lives here in Cumberland took over Northeast Beverage, I think he was here. He's, he's part of the TIF District 2, and portions of True Spring Farm, they're TIF District 2.
Can you just remind me, is the third column over for TIF District 1, for instance, 932,000, was that the initial assessed value when the TIF district was created? Like, the land was worth $932,000? Now, it's grown to 42 million, is that correct?
The initial assessed values, I'm not sure, well, you don't have them on the screen, but I do have them on the paper.
Oh, these are balances?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, Bailey's telling me she thinks those might be the balances.
So, that number you see, 932,000, that is the amount of revenues generated this current year, or from TIF District, or one year, it might have been two years ago.
Okay.
Because I think it's actually up to 3.3 million this year.
Bill, pardon my ignorance on this, but kind of tailing off of what Mark said. So, if we wanted to do something in TIF District 8, we can use the TIF district funds from all the other?
Well, yes and no. It depends, it kind of depends. If it's going towards your overall goals of economic development, yes. So, we used collectively all the monies from the TIF districts to rebuild Range Road. And we spent probably close to $5 million on what's done out there to date, because we were bringing the water out toward Route 100 as part of the economic development. So, we got to blow up the whole road and fix the road as part of that project. We've done the same thing from the fairgrounds, to bring water out to Route 100 and Blackstrap Road from that direction, and that was the reason we were able to do it. You couldn't, I'm trying to think of a set of circumstances where, there are not a lot of circumstances that, that wouldn't be practical, like, for instance, down the road, you might want to consider putting a tank on top of Blueberry Hill, which would help probably the most critical part of that neighborhood that needs water, and that could be tied into economic development for the Route 100 corridor. So, you would be able to mix and match that, but where it'd be difficult, if you tried to do, say for instance, putting water down Pleasant Valley Road, or most of Valley Road, they wouldn't really be in a TIF district. But Bruce Hill Road, which really is the worst part of that area, you would be, because you're going up to feed a tank at the top of the hill, which services the whole Route 100 corridor. So, you want to be careful on how you pick and choose your capital projects, because as long as you can tie them in to something related to economic development, you're going to be okay. And that's why we try to project several years out, even if it means we go underwater a little bit, it's always going to come back and rebound.
So, if I want, if we wanted to do something with the senior housing, say in, say in Tiffy.
Okay.
We would, we would not be able to use all the TIF, TIF from, from the other, the other districts?
That's a really good question, Mike, and I'm glad you brought it up, because if you wanted to do additional senior housing or affordable housing projects, the only TIF district you have eligible to use senior housing monies is, is TIF 8.
Right.
So, you would have to amend those districts as well. So, if you're thinking that maybe something out on Route 100 and some of those properties in the VOC 1 that are in the TIF districts, that you wanted to do something, I would tell you that while we're doing, amending one of these districts, you should amend several of them, so that you give yourselves more options.
Yeah.
Then, you could use that affordable housing money in all three of those districts, or extend all three of those districts.
We amended 8.
That's a really good question, from a strategy standpoint, that would be a really good piece of strategy.
We amended 8 because affordable housing.
We amended.
And it was pretty easy to do.
We amended 8, yes, exactly. It wasn't very difficult to do, but Mike brings up a good point. That's the one thing you wouldn't be able to do if you hadn't amended that district. So, if you go in and want to extend TIF District 1, I would look at other districts and land opportunities, and that could be a charge to the Comp Plan Committee. Let's look at the land uses that we foresee, perhaps that other, other districts could be extended to help with our affordable housing initiatives. And I think that would be really good timing. So, it's not just singly focused on transit, or singly focused on this, but what would be, what would work townwide?
Thank you.
I'm not sure, I know I was in at the last budget meeting, if we had talked about, I heard you just mention a director of housing, is that for this fiscal year?
I, I am not proposing it in this fiscal year. What I spoke about at the last meeting was that in FY '28, when TIF 1 could be extended for another 20 years.
Yep.
That would be the appropriate time to add the director, because then you would have dedicated funds available for that position.
Okay, so we're on the same page there.
Yep.
And then, it all ties in with the comp plan, because we'll have some more runway. Okay.
Yeah. Timing is perfect for the comp plan, it is, and lining all these other initiatives up, if the council wants to go in that direction.
Okay.
So, all of your, your, all of your TIF districts are doing well, they will generate about $3.37 million in FY '25. I do want to thank Katie, she has been working with me to put these schedules together for the future audits. And what I would ask that you see, excuse me, that you see, is you see an accounting for each district. So, as you're approaching their end life, you know how much they have in them. Our TIF districts right now, by choice and by purpose, are underwater, meaning they owe the general fund more money than they're taking in. But when they come out, you want to make sure that you get to the finish line with very close to zero, if not less than zero, monies in them, because it gets very convoluted on what happens with revenues that are left over. Those have to go back toward funding education, have to go back to DECD, and they really don't want you to do that. They want you to spend it based on the plan that you have put forward. So, you will, you will see that, I hope. We're going to be meeting with the auditors fairly soon to look at, when we get to the FY '24 audit, you will see actually, let me just show you if I can here, what it would kind of look like. It's, it's actually pretty simple, and so you will see a form that basically does the accounting for you, in a sense that every TIF district will have a balance at the bottom of it, of what their value is. And that's important, because when you get to the bottom, here you get to, where it is, oh, we're going to make some of these columns a little wider, but when you get to the bottom, you want to know what it is. So, at the end of FY '24, this is the end balance in District 1, this is District 2, this is District 3, this is District 4. So, every one of the eight districts has an accounting, and that is extremely important, because you want to be able to show you know what you're doing. We have not had this type of accounting in our, in our annual audits, and I would encourage the Finance Committee, as we go forward, to really push on this, because this is something that I think if we don't do this, it could easily get away from you pretty quickly.
Well, I was also thinking, so for TIF District 1 there, let's say we didn't extend it, right? And it just died its natural life, right?
Yep.
Technically, we're $427,000 in the hole for that district, right? We owe the general fund $427,000.
At the end of this year.
Correct, so would the idea be that you'd also have to plan, if you do plan on lapsing a particular district, that you allow it to generate sufficient amount of revenue to get itself back up to zero in that particular district? So, you also need to leave yourself enough runway to cap it off at zero, right? To let it fill its tank back up to get to zero, right? Does that make sense?
And that was Katie's point when she met with me, she said, how do you know how you're going to get to the finish line if you don't know what every single district looks like? So, we put this schedule together, and what she is going to request from the auditors going forward, is that this gives us three years to get TIF District 1 to minus $6. So, we're done with that. And that's okay, you can dedicate the funds the way you see fit, and that's what our goal.
So, in other words, if we did nothing out of this district for the next three years, it would effectively true back up to six bucks underwater, right?
If, well, we would have to be a little bit more deliberate than that, because I think I showed you that we're about three years out before we come over, before we come back above water. Let's look at the five-year charts, a little, back to here is when we hit, the red is all underwater, so what's that year here? You have that chart right in front of you.
But that's for all the districts, right?
Yeah, that's right, but then you know that you want to basically push more money toward TIF District 1, so that you're not negative.
Got it.
Because once, once it expires, you're stuck with the deficit, there's nowhere else to get money from, from that rock, it's done. So, you want to get, you want to put your, you want to put your eggs in that basket and get that to zero as quick as you can.
But again, to Mike's point, or others, you can transfer funds from a different district.
Yeah, you can dedicate.
So long as it's for general economic purposes, you could bring it back up to zero.
Exactly, and you have enough bonds out now that you can do that very easily.
Okay.
So, we could take the bond monies due, and we could basically, instead of taking them from TIF 1, we leave the revenues there, and we put it on TIF 2, or TIF 5, or one of the others that expire later on, that have, have a lot more runway. So, I, I think it's a really good exercise, I think the Finance Committee, next time they do meet with the auditor, and here's the other downside of TIF districts. And this is, I scared you last time when I put together the, the charts, but doing nothing scares me more than anything, and having $8 million when you get to the finish line in 2048, it's not a good thing. Because these are conservative estimates, I believe the estimates will probably be over $10 million if you do nothing. So, you want to basically start thinking of projects. Right now, for projects, that's why we look at projections. And the yellow, what I have shown here as projections, are going to total about $1.43 million. The last couple of years, we have purposely put a ton of money into infrastructure, and really worked hard at paving and getting facilities paved, and getting everything in town paved. This year, paving plan is going to be a little bit less, we're looking at funding the public safety towers, I've got a little bit of a report on that in a minute, at $3 million. I think we're only going to spend maybe 2 million, so it'll be an up to number. We'll have, hopefully, more gas lines going in across the turnpike. We got a price to go across the turnpike for the gas main of 100,000, the gas company will pay for that, not us, and that'll get the westerly side of the turnpike the ability to connect the natural gas, if they choose to do so. And then, we have projects on Route 1, a turning lane, and extension of Skyview Drive. I believe by June, we will know if the Foley's Gym will be going forward, and with that, possibly up to about a 40-bedroom apartment facility for senior affordable housing as well. Those two projects, we hope that they're going to get back on track, and if they do, then we will be requested to fund that, and if they don't go forward, there'll be another $600,000 that would be available, or come right off the deficit of, of what this year will end up in. Right now, we're projected, this year will end up at minus 1.8. That is an IOU to the general fund, and that will be paid back by 2029. So, we are, we are heading in the right direction with projects, these bigger projects are coming to a close. Also, some of the bonding you did earlier in, in the career, on the Range Road, and the Blanchard Road water lines, and the Skillon Road reconstructions with water lines, all those will be coming to a close in the next five to seven years. So, more revenues will be added to your bottom line, not less, and they just start to stack on each other. That's why I'm recommending that you start thinking about now, or in the near future, projects like the Roundabout. I have the Roundabout in here now for FY '26 at $2 million. If that doesn't get funded, there's $2 million more you need to figure out how to spend. We have things like the water line at Bruce Hill Road, that could be as much as $5 million, and I put in there West Cumberland businesses, that could easily be, for me, justified by basically adding more businesses to West Cumberland, you're going to need more water. And remember, right now, your water system is on a pump system, you want to get to a tank system, so that line is always full. I was wondering today, as the line broke at Wind Road, if we could have backflowed back from the tank, back to Main Street, and kept those schools open, have another option. The pressure might be too high for the school. Instead of not being able to flush the toilets, we might have geysers coming out of them. So, we want to be careful what we wish for, because that tank will be at elevation four hundred. The elevation on Main Street is, at best, one seventy-five, one eighty, above sea level, so.
Really, I think Bob and Tig had questions.
So, um, I, I think I get it, but I think I need a little help. We're counting on the increased values coming with increased valuation as time goes on, correct?
Not in this model. You will get increased, in two years, you, uh, next, next budget cycle, you will, yes, you will have more. They're not reflected in this model.
Right, right, but if you, if you, if you look at the, the life term, lifetime of the TIF district, the values continue to rise.
Correct.
Unlike a, a residential property, even though the values continue to rise, the taxation on that doesn't rise, correct?
That is correct, because your value stays constant until you go through another revale. So if you're assessed during the next revale at X dollars, it'll stay X.
Or you spend a lot.
Add something to it, or something, right.
Right.
If you do nothing to your property, it'll stay the same in value until the next revaluation.
But it, but it also, it's also tied to your spending.
Uh, the tax rate is.
Right, right, right. But that, it's different on the TIF properties, they're not tied to the tax rate.
They are absolutely tied to the tax rate. So if the, if, if you have a business that's worth two million dollars.
Right.
That business is, the value times the tax rate. So whatever the tax rate is regardless, every single year, that's what is applied to the value of that business. It doesn't go up if it doesn't add anything or take anything away, it still stays at two million until the next revale. But the taxes creep up three to three and a half, four percent.
Right, so in other words, a, a property that is within a TIF, and a property that is outside of a TIF, are both subject to the same mill rate.
Right.
The only difference is, is the property that's outside of the TIF, one hundred percent of that mill rate then goes to the school, to the county, and to the town. In a TIF, you, those, those, they still pay the same amount, but it's, it's sheltered, and it's put, those, those revenue streams are then put into a different, into a TIF fund that could then be used for these purposes. I know Shirley had a question, and then Tig, you were before her, so I think we'll get to Tig, and then we'll jump to.
Okay.
Okay, so as, I know we're thinking about water, but as we're thinking about both economic development and affordable housing, do we need to be thinking about sewer? Because my understanding is that sewer isn't linear, right? Is, doesn't it kind of go?
It's, uh, trickier, it's more expensive, it's, yeah.
Do we have to be thinking about that, as, in terms of businesses, or if we were to build?
So, most of, uh, the Route One, North and Souths is all sewered, that's all sewered. Main Street, uh, pretty much all sewered up to, um, well, almost to Wind Road now, almost to Wind Road, with low-pressure sewer. But, the western side of town is on what I classify as Type A soils. So those soils are much smaller septic systems, and much more conducive to, uh, treating, uh, septic waste. We have, now almost sixty percent of our town has access to public water. So as we puncture the aquifer less, uh, which is a good thing, uh, that's a, uh, that will help, as well as the soils that are present through most of West Cumberland. That district, especially, uh, the VCC, is pretty much on fifty feet of sand and gravel. So, that, that's a positive thing for wastewater. It's not as critical out there as it would be, um, say on Route One, where it would be almost impossible.
Yeah, it's all clay.
To, to have sewer, uh, if we didn't have public sewer, couldn't have septic systems. We could, but it would be very, very expensive, and most likely people wouldn't, wouldn't build there, if they had to build on septic.
But take the sewer down, especially down where you live, doesn't just go Main Street.
Oh, it's wacky.
Then, goes down one of the side streets, crosses, comes up, goes through in somebody's yard, I mean, it's.
I think, in, in, or I, I just want to clarify, so, um, in terms of the areas, say Route one hundred, right? As we are looking to kind of build out that area with the Roundabout, they are currently okay, they are well-equipped to start a business because of the water and sewer situation?
The water and septic, right.
And septic, sorry, septic, okay. So we would not need to think about earmarking TIF funds for a project in order to, to support either economic development or affordable housing?
That's a good question. Affordable housing would be a little bit trickier, only because you're going to use more sewer with housing than you are with, say, a business that it's usually
One toilet.
ten gallons per employee type of situation versus, you know, three hundred gallons per house is what we use today. So it's, it's a lot when you get into households. So, if you were looking at affordable housing projects, it's a little trickier, but it's possible, definitely possible.
What about, because we've been throwing around the idea of the multi-use, right? A business on the bottom, and possibly a apartment.
Right, that's a better, that's a better way to go.
Okay, and we'd be better.
Right.
Set for.
You're looking at about twenty thousand square, or you're looking at half an acre for each one of those properties. And that, and that's where it gets expensive, because you're using up more land. If you're on sewer, you can get down to essentially, you know, a thousand square feet, you know, versus twenty thousand square feet for a minimum under state plumbing code. You're connected to the sewer, the public sewer, you're, you're not restricted, other than anything you do by zoning.
Okay, thank you.
I know Shirley had a question, sorry, I just want to make sure we're.
No, I think I, well, I mostly answered my own question.
Okay.
But, because I was looking at the discrepancies on this, and this included potential. I'm wondering about the discrepancies, like, between last year's and this year's. Like, shouldn't, what, what accounts for the difference in?
So.
Last year's numbers to this year's numbers.
They're going to change every single year. All we're doing is projections for the next, you know, five to ten years, and we, um, like, let's talk about, uh, TIF District One, Two, and Three. We have a vet building that's probably in there at maybe, maybe a half a million dollars of value, when we all know that'll be almost fourteen million dollars of value when it's totally complete. We've got, you know, other projects that are, are being built, the Mark, for instance, that's, that's not fully valued yet. That's in TIF District Three, I believe. So all of those values will start creeping up, uh, but, uh, we're, we're focusing on the year we're in. Last year has been trued up, this year has been trued up. Next year, I haven't done a lot too, because I'm just, the numbers are kind of meaningless because of the revale.
Yeah.
So while they, they may show eleven million, they'll probably be, you know, eleven, uh, they could be seventeen million next year, and nothing could have changed, other than the value.
Because last year, we were going to be solvent, not until twenty thirty-two. But this year, you project we'll be solvent in twenty thirty, two years earlier, no, twenty twenty-nine.
Right, right, well, I think, I think I scared you at the last meeting, when I basically put all the projects on there, I've taken them all off.
You did.
I did.
Because look, I had the old numbers, like, what's the difference between nine sixty-five and six fifty-one thousand?
So as, as you change those numbers, those curves change dramatically. So why, why I try to do it is basically put, put the projects out in front of you and say, you know, you have a laundry list of projects, and that list is only going to grow over time. So, you just need to prioritize. You can't do everything, but you can do a lot.
Right.
So, you know, you really have to decide, um, you know, for instance, until we get into a better groove, I mean, we've been, we've been putting a lot of money into the paving plan across town, because we put just about half the streets, or three-quarters of the streets into the, into the TIF District Seven and Eights, because of, uh, gas mains. So, we, those are eligible for paving, so why not do the paving while we're trying to figure out what's next on the horizon for larger, uh, larger capital projects? We have fire engines that are, um, in the TIF, in TIF Eight in particular, and, and, uh, I believe in Seven, uh, Six and Seven as well. So, until those are ready for replacement.
I think it's helpful to have those numbers to where, where they are now projected, to where they are, for example, in twenty twenty-seven. If you look at where we're projecting now, it's like four eighty-two, four hundred and eighty-two thousand. But if you did all those projects that you had put, it's almost twice as much.
Oh, it'd be even more than that, I think.
Eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Yeah.
So I think that is important to look at, from a finance point of view. I'm not a finance person, but when you double the debt.
Shirley, I hate when you say that, because you are a finance person, you understand it.
No, I mess up so often.
You have at least baseline literacy.
Very good question.
But I think it would be good for the, for everybody, to see, like, this is where our debt is, but this is where it's going to be. This is what it's going to be.
Yep. But the other thing you really want to be careful of, we are conservative with those values, for a reason. Because those values in most of those districts will grow. And we are not projecting a lot, a lot of growth in there, maybe two or three percent, basically following the tax rate. We're not projecting new buildings, we're not projecting a lot of growth until it happens, and then we'll reset it and move it forward. But, what I try to do is, in the five-year window, be as conservative as I can, and, and in the longer term, just basically show you, you've got to start budgeting for projects. Now, the argument could be, until we get above, above water again, we don't want to basically use our fund balance to serve as the bank for the TIF district. That's absolutely your call. But I would, I would just caution you that you want to be careful, because when you look ahead and you see you have ten years left, ten years goes by really fast, when you're trying to plan a lot of different capital projects. You know, sometimes it's a year or two before you can get it approved through the planning board, and through the state offices sometimes, especially the state fire marshal's office, especially the DEP. Those things take time, and then it takes time to construct all those things. So, it's better to have bigger, a bigger plan and a bigger menu of, of projects in front of you than a smaller one, because you don't want to get to the finish line and say, oh no, now what?
So, but, if I look at the mill rate increase that you projected at three percent a year.
Right.
Over five years, though, that's nineteen percent.
Yep.
On the tax. That's, that means taxpayers, tax bills would go up nineteen percent?
Well, remember, the value is following the tax rate regardless. So if it stayed flat.
Well, that means spending's going up nineteen percent.
Well, historically, it has gone up over three percent a year for, forever.
Yeah.
So, we're just following historical proj, uh, historical trends.
Okay.
So, if things change and go the other way, and all of a sudden it's going down, then you've got to look at the other part of it. It could be, um, um, you want to basically pull back a little bit. So, that's why the first five years is the important, the next, up to twenty forty-eight is not as important to me right now. But the next five years are important.
They are.
It's, it's a moving target, it really is.
Sorry, yeah, jumping back to Tig's kind of question about the sewer line.
Yep.
So where does it end right now?
Uh, best way to describe it is from Main Street to the water, and only on Tuttle Road. That's the other thing, it's really, it's almost like a T.
Is there still a map of the sewer on the webpage?
On the website, I think there is.
Uh, I think there is, it's, it really has got to get updated again, because we've done some work on Main Street to get it back down to Wyman Way, and we've gone almost up to that, um, uh, major crossing that was built, uh, just a couple summers ago, that big culvert that went across there. We extended it out that far when we went, uh, when we rebuilt the road over there. So, it's not quite to Wind Road, but it's not that far from it either, almost to Turkey Lane, I'd say, almost.
Out of curiosity, was it for the Chases Pit project, knowing that it's been a hot topic regarding the aquifer? Was it explored to run a sewer line out there? Is that something we should be exploring? Is that a loaded question?
Sewer has a tremendous impact on growth.
Okay.
More so than water. Sewer is probably the driving catalyst more than anything, because of groundwater pollution and being, and the capacity of soils to absorb those different chemicals and everything else, the composition that's in wastewater. So, um, you really want to be careful with that. That would not be a bad question to, uh, to pose to the Comp Plan Committee, and a really serious, almost like a subcommittee, to say, if we were to extend the sewer, what does that look like? Because you also have to remember that you're limited to your capacity with the Falmouth Treatment Plant.
Yeah.
You own thirty percent of the Falmouth Treatment Plant, and you're using a little over half your capacity right now, probably about sixty percent of your capacity.
Yeah.
So you still have additional capacity. Problem, what, this is really going to get a little convoluted, but you've extended sewer lines in a lot of places and towns, not everybody's connected to them. So, if people start connecting to them, that, and then you start expanding the sewer, you may run out of capacity a lot faster. So infill along the sewer lines, uh, is, is problematic for you, because you don't truly have forty percent of your capacity left. Because I would say twenty percent of that would probably go toward infill. So, if you were being cautious, you probably have enough to expand twenty, twenty percent more to maximize that capacity. And, and is that, I think we have about thirteen or fourteen hundred users today. So it's about, you know, just under a third of the properties that are connected now.
Yeah.
You, you could probably go another few hundred, maybe, maybe even up to five hundred, but after that, it would get real close.
So, the existing businesses in that area, over in West Cumberland, are they all on individual septics, or?
Yes.
Okay. Does that become problematic when it becomes really condensed? Like, if it becomes, you know, knowing what I know, which is like minimal knowledge about septic space and leach fields and proximity to water, I would imagine then, when, once you start to become super crowded, it's not great? Or do you attach on to each other? How does that work?
Uh, there are a lot of options today for septic that weren't available twenty, thirty years ago. I mean, we used to basically dig a hole in the ground and throw a cup of water, and that was the perk test, you know? And that's, we've come a long way since those days. So, uh, if you want to think about a perk test, if you, if you dug a hole in, say, somewhere around the VCC, which is, I would call the area to the right and left of Blackstrap and Skilling's Road, just that top of the hill area, all sand. You dug a hole there, you could pour a cup for, forever, and it would just keep draining. It's a really very high, high-quality soils, all sand and gravels, which, which absorb and filter out, uh, all the pollutants in, uh, most wastewater that would be generated. Especially, uh, residential, light business, light manufacturing. And we're not talking about chemical processing or any of that stuff. And there are very sophisticated systems today that would take care of any, any series of complex things. You wouldn't want to put a dairy on a septic system, that would be really bad. But most other things would be okay.
Okay. Sorry, that was down a rabbit hole.
No, it's, it's a good rabbit hole.
Down the sewer drains.
Down the sewer drain.
That's good.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, one more, um, what, and if you don't know this off the top of your head, that's okay. Uh, how many residents roughly, or what percentage are on town water?
Oh, that's more. Well, we have at least thirteen. If, if I had to guess, we can find the number out for you, but I would say probably closer to eighteen, nineteen hundred, as it compared to thirteen hundred for, um, we have a lot of water lines.
And you have a whole lot more ready-to-serves as well, right?
Yeah, that's, that's not a thing anymore. We got away from that because, um, people were being charged, and we weren't counting them correctly years ago. Uh, years ago, when the sewer system was put in, we charged people ready-to-serv fees as we passed their homes. We don't have a lot of those left, so most of those have already connected. But the water system, um, first and foremost, it was put in for fire protection. And then people, the benefit of it was people could connect to public water as we went. We always put, uh, when we, when we did these water line extensions, we put property, uh, connections for a lot of people. But in many cases, they stayed on their wells, and didn't want to pay the monthly water bills. So, I can get the exact number from you, uh, for the next meeting, so you know. But, uh, it's a little bit more than sewer, but, uh, not as many as you'd think.
I was just thinking about all the storms we've had this year, and power outages, and people that are on wells versus, you know.
Yeah, water.
Yeah, um, and just access, okay, thank you.
So, once again, just, just be careful on how far you go with, uh, with these projects. They are all, i- if they become not a project, then you, sometime you want to think about taking them off the list. I do have the, uh, water, water at Bruce Hill Road with a five million dollar price tag. And just a quick math, uh, a twenty-year bond, eighty, eighty to eighty-five thousand dollars a year over twenty years, so, per million. So, five million would be four hundred thousand dollars a year for twenty years. So, when you do the math, try to stretch out your projects as far as you can go. This, you wouldn't bond this project on Skyview Drive, because we could do this in one year, and it's one and done. Fire trucks, you might want to put together in, in different packages. So there's, there's, we'll keep adding to this list, but, uh, it's really your call when to eliminate them, or to say, we're no longer interested in that. And, and again, not just, I'm not trying to kick the can to the Comp Plan Committee, but these are a long-range. but these are long-range, uh, projects that really should be discussed a little bit more thoroughly. Um, when you get out to your 15-year chart, that's why you see this thing skyrocketing to just money and it kind of goes off the chart. Um, that, that's really, that's really because we haven't really looked any further than, you know, five to seven years out there. Uh, once you get up to, you know, 2030 and 2035, you really want to start thinking about how do you want to wrap the TIF up? Also, go backwards from when it ends, 20 years. Because when you go backwards, you know when the last year you really want to bond something. Because you don't want it to extend and carry over to the general fund. You want to try to get it paid for by the time it ends and not have to, you know, carry additional capital. You may make a choice at that. You might say, well, we'll, we'll deal with it when it gets there. But, um, ju- just look at it long-term. Don't, uh, don't get, uh, it's not unlimited, I'll say. And if, uh, if you do extend TIF 1 20 more years, also break out that 25% so you know what 25% you have available for you for other projects. And, you know, I know Katie will keep an eye on it. I know Chris will keep an eye on it for you. But just make sure you know each year what you have at the end of the year and then what is in each TIF district. So, that's that. Um, so for me, I think when we look at this year, I think I was pretty clear in what we were looking at. We were looking at just, uh, adding additional to the paving plan of about just under 600,000. The communication towers, which I believe will probably be closer to, to 160, 180 than 240, but we'll know more as we get closer. Um, Chip and I and Chris met out with owners of a tower out in Falmouth that's over 300 feet tall. Uh, they had just had a, uh, service provider come off, so they now have a space on it. Um, they are looking to negotiate an annual lease with us, which would probably be cheaper than our payback period on building a tower. So, I will continue to work with them and bring back a price to the finance committee and then to the council for consideration in the future. And that would be part of, uh, you know, part of this project and could be paid for out of this because telecommunications towers are coming out of, uh, TIF number 8. Uh, that would help us tremendously. The same person is interested in helping construct a new tower on Range Way for us, that, uh, we'd go in together, that we would purchase the materials, they would do all the construction, and, uh, then we would come up with an arrangement for cost sharing for, uh, future vendors that could go on to this tower. It would be a 200-foot tower like we proposed through our, uh, district, our public safety tower district, uh, that we changed the ordinance, I don't know, over a year ago now, it seems like two years ago. Uh, but that would fit into that category and we would be able to get our microwave system up and running, hopefully within the next 18 months if this all comes together. And it should pretty much happen, I'm hoping, by the end of June.
How big is the tower there now?
Where?
Range Way.
On Range Way, this would be a new tower.
I know, but I'm just.
200, I think it's 200 feet. I think it is 200 feet.
So, it's same size.
Same size, just around the corner a little bit. So, that was, uh, very positive news. Chip has been working really hard on that. Um, Chris and I were pretty encouraged by what we saw and what it would require. We don't use a lot of power, so it would require a pretty small generator to be connected for public safety, our, our public safety radio system. So, I think it would, uh, be really, really well-received.
Bill, would that be on the land that we clearly own or the land that's in dispute?
The land that we clearly own, not the disputed, uh,
Okay.
Disney World property, no.
Yeah.
No. No, I stayed away from that purposely. I just, it's not worth it, not right now because this project's got some legs to it. So, those would be the projects we'd come back to you once they were settled and, uh, put together a plan for you. And, uh, everything seems to be kind of, uh, ending on a purchase-sale, sales agreements all in June. So, I'm really excited about what we could have on Skyview Drive again. Um, I did talk to David Chase today about the water line. Um, we, our prices came in over the 250,000 we had appropriated for it. Um, he has committed to the difference. So, we will only spend the 250,000 that was authorized by the council last June. So, that crossing could, to get the water across the turnpike, um, uh, we'll know more about that come, again, everything's in June, in June. So, there'll be a lot of reporting coming out. Uh, he is looking obviously to get it, uh, to the entrance of the pit and into that subdivision because he can't build that subdivision without public water. So, that, uh, is what he's working through the numbers right now. And, um, we will have more information of the council in Jan, uh, in June about the outcome. If he chooses not to go forward with the project, then that 250 goes back into the, into the pot. And, uh, we have more to use for other projects. So, um, that, that just happened Thursday. We opened the bids for that. I think the price that we got, the lowest price, the one and only price we got was Gorham Sand and Gravel for a 318, and, um, we have budgeted 250. So, David would be responsible for the rest and to get it to, to the project. So, um, prices have changed dramatically in the last couple of years, and unfortunately, so has that.
Where does he stand with the planning board and DEP and getting those soils approved and all of?
He presently is, uh, scheduled to be in the planning board at the end of May. It should happen, I think, the day after Memorial Day, I think, is their next scheduled meeting. So, they are going to be meeting, and I think the Rusty Lantern, those two projects will be on the docket from what I hear right now. Uh, the Harris Road subdivision, uh, they are not going to be ready for May, so we won't see that probably until June. And that's all I've seen so far. So, um, I don't see any other projects. Do you remember any, Chris? I'm kind of at a loss with that. So, I think that's, that's enough for that night. That'll take a lot of time, and I think it'll be standing room only in here, so it'll be a busy night.
So, is it, it's the second hearing for the Rusty Lantern, right?
That is correct.
Technically, the first hearing for the housing development, right?
That's correct. It's, yeah.
Last one was a, like, a consult kind of?
Right. They, they have a lot of the plan to go through. Um, they have got a report back, I think, on the, um, aquifer, uh, that, uh, their, Gorham Palm is working on that. Um, we met, uh, with staff and basically instructed them that their drainage design would never be approved for any public road because it was very deep in the ground, and we said, that's way too deep for any of our contractors, and it would be the most costly infrastructure we've seen in Cumberland. So, uh, we said, we, everything has got to be above 10 feet, no less, no deeper than 10 feet. Some of the, some of the storm drain was over 16, 18 feet deep, and we said that, that's just not going to happen. So, so there were a lot of things they had to go back and forth with. And, um, they, I think we will see them, uh, in May, definitely, uh, perhaps May and June, but I'm not sure. Right now, I'm tentatively hearing, uh, May. And we're also talking about the covenants for the affordability, and, uh, they were supposed to be to the attorneys today. So, that will be coming forward to the planning board as well.
I was going to say, if we're, unless there's any other additional questions on TIF, um, do we want to take maybe a five-minute break before we jump into the full budget review?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Grab some food and wash up and, okay.